Good evening, everybody. I see attendance is slightly better at this city council meeting than some of our summer meetings. I have an idea why, though. Of course, before we move on with the standard agenda, of course, we have a couple of officers who are going to get sworn in, and this is one of my favorite things as a member of the council and mayor to see is the families come out and see their family members get this great distinct honor. So, thank you all for coming out, and if you're willing after the ceremony of swearing in your family members, we're going to have cake for another event for the departure of our city manager, and so if you want to stick around and eat some of that cake and visit, we'll have a brief 10-minute recess after that and reconvene the meeting after that, so everybody can socialize and spend time with each other. So, Chief, if you'd like to swear in the officers?
Chief, do you want to introduce them?
Sure.
To everybody first. First, we have a brand-new hire, Mike Webster, who's going to start tomorrow. And then Chris is a reserve officer that's been working with us for the last couple of years, been helping do all the events and numerous other things, but has never been officially sworn in, so we're doing that tonight as well. Chris Holm.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Holm.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Coquille, Coos County.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Coquille, Coos County.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
For the Coquille Police Department.
For the Coquille Police Department.
To which I have been appointed according to law and to the best of my ability.
To which I have been appointed according to law and to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Webster.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Coquille, Coos County.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Coquille, Coos County.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
For the Coquille Police Department.
For the Coquille Police Department.
To which I have been appointed according to law and to the best of my ability.
To which I have been appointed according to law and to the best of my ability.
This is only going to hurt for a second, so.
(laughing).
Does it upside down?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know why people ever take these things off.
(laughing).
Bet you pressed your prom date, didn't you?
(laughing).
Now, it's with, oh, well, I'll let everybody wrap up here and get this taken care of with the oaths here. If the officers here, Councilor Short is always so conscientious about these things. Would the officers like to introduce their families that are here with them? They just got to introduce us all to who they are a little bit more. Let's start with Officer Webster. You want to introduce your friends and family?
All right, I can do that.
Put you on the hot seat early.
I have a lot of friends and family here.
Well, go for it. Go for it.
This is my Uncle Darwin, my Aunt Anna, my cousin Shay, my best buddy Jimmy Lay, his wife, and my best friend, Taryn Lay, my wife, Rachel Webster, her grandpa, Tony Locidichi. I'm drawing a blank, and I feel horrible. Debbie Locidichi.
Grandma.
No, I'm sorry. Keith, and my wife's mother, my mother-in-law, Angie Locidichi.
All right. Now, I know Officer Holm travels from ways away, so I don't know. Do you have anybody with you?
Yes. My sergeant.
All right.
My boy. We've got Charles and Tasha. We have Orin and I forgot.
Jenna.
Jenna. Of course, Chief and his wife, so, yes, my family's here.
Well, it's with great regret that I have to do this, but people move on and things change, so Ben, why don't you come on down with me here? Get on the hot seat right there. Now, Ben has been with this city for just over four years, and Ben came on just a few months before I became mayor, so I haven't worked with any other city manager, but I can say, having worked with superintendents on school board and things of that nature, knowing the relationship between managers and elected policymakers, Ben has done a fantastic job, and God bless him, I wish him nothing but the best, so thanks a lot, Ben. It says, "Thank you for your four years of service to the City of Coquille." And now, everybody, we're going to do a break 10-minute recess, have some cake and refreshments, visit with each other, and we'll be back in session in 10 minutes. It's here, and we can get this back in order here. Everybody's back here actually, so I'll call us back in the session at 7:22 PM. So, on the mayor's comments and back to the agenda. I hope everybody had a good and safe Labor Day weekend. I had a lot of fun, took a trip down to Old Beach and visited with family and cleaned up my grandparents' and great-grandfather's grave site, so it was good to catch up on some history there and do some book shopping and got to have a lot of fun at the Labor Day picnics. Southwest Labor Council had their annual picnic up in North Bend, and that was nice to visit with a lot of folks from across the county, and I got to more dear to my heart, I got to go to the carpenters picnic from Roseburg Wood Products up in Laverne Park, lots of friends and neighbors and people I've known my whole life up there, and it was just a lot of fun, and I'm sure everybody else hopefully had a great Labor Day weekend too. As far as housekeeping, I am going to appoint Caroline Barr. She is, if I'm not mistaken, Associate County Counsel or a researcher in the County Counsel's Office, I don't want to get her, she's not a lawyer, but she's a paralegal in the County Counsel's Office. Very dedicated friend of the Coquille Library, and she'll do an outstanding job on the library board, and that will get us back up to full composition, so if there are no concerns regarding that appointment, I'd like to make it official. During that, then, I'll appoint Caroline Barr effective immediately to the Coquille Library Board. Just a brief thing to say, good news on the fish cleaning station is all, but almost totally complete. People are using it now, right? Or can, yeah, it's open for use, but it's not completely finished, but it's this close, it's this close. It requires a cutting board and, I think, what, a light?
No, the lights are there. It's just, you know, if you turn them on during the day, you're really not going to see them. We're having kind of some second thoughts about how we want to deal with the cutting board instead of attaching them and actually drilling through the stainless steel. We may put some non-stick items on the underside and just tether them with a cable to the thing and have them hanging on the wall. So, if people want to use them, they can take them down and use them. If they don't, they don't have to, because some people bring their own, some people don't use them at all, I mean, they just flag, but evidently people are using it, because there was a big old salmon carcass in the bottom of the trash cans, and it was working perfectly. It landed right on the mesh screen, and there was no water in the can at all, so that part's working, fan's working, lights are working. Like I said, Kevin, we've got a leaking washer, so we need to change out a little thing here and there, but, like I said, yeah, people are using it, so.
Well, great, and we're going to hold an official ribbon cutting ceremony with that, and I'm sure we're going to have our friends at the Coquille Chamber of Commerce in Port Abandon, probably the Watershed Council, and maybe some friends from staff, and do a nice little event out there to spread the word as to how great of a fish cleaning station it is, and that it's open again, and it's brand-new and ADA accessible.
Yes, it is.
You know, so that's great. Another thing people might notice, and I'm very pleased to see this, this is something the city's been asking for, the school district's been asking for for years, look out your window. Well, actually, this is not the right blinking sign, but a blinking sign like that indicating that you're going into the school zone is finally there. We have the flashing, this is when the 20 miles per hour is in force sign is there. I know citizens have told me time and again how frustrating it was for them, because, you know, if you don't have kids in school, it's sometimes hard to know, people are going 20 in the middle of summer going through there, or they're going, you know, 40 going through there when school's in session, so the flashing lights are going to be great for safety. And also, if people haven't noticed, a few months ago, that went down to 30 through there, so that's a good reminder too. It's not 40 anymore, folks, because I pull out right there on West Central and almost get clipped every day, so it's a good healthy 30, you know. But I guess that's better than when it was 40 and people were going 50, you know. Also, one other thing before I wrap up is that it's election season. I am not running for reelection as mayor, I chose to seek another office, and so we'll have a new mayor elected in November, and we've got, I think, two city councilors not seeking reelection, and so we'll have at least two new city councilors, we've got a bunch of candidates. Sadly, we don't have a county voter's pamphlet that lets you see all the details on the local candidates, so all I would do is urge everybody to get out there, meet them, talk to them, listen to them, get informed, and hopefully there'll be some forums where you can hear their positions on the issues. So, it's your opportunity to decide who's going to take this city in the next direction after November. So, that's all I have for mayor's comments. I will start with council comments with Councilor Graham.
Okay, the only comment I have is I just want to announce that Coquille Riverwalk and the Coquille Police Department is going to have a joint cleanup along, or along Riverwalk Saturday from 10 to noon. Chief said he's got garbage bags and garbage grabbers, everyone's welcome to come help pick up some garbage, make it a little brighter. Anything to add, Chief?
Kathy got us a dumpster, so there'll be a dumpster out at the GP lot, and the police department's friends in Redwood loves, just anyone that wants to come and help, maybe wear some leather, bring some leather gloves to go over top of those, and then we'll have all the trash bags, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout and we'll get a lot of trash picked up out there.
Good. According to the weather report, it's supposed to be nice Saturday, so where your son at?
And your counselor, Councilor Heaton.
Right, I've had a busy day showing my brother-in-law and sister, Anna Jean Wiltshireton, around town, they're from Arores, California, and we went to see the carousel, which was hosted by, very aptly, by Shirley Baller, and we even bought some things from the garage sale. I showed them where the Riverwalk was. Tomorrow, if the weather permitting, we will walk the Riverwalk. Then I showed them the new gazebo at Rietman, and the guys are doing a gorgeous job, gee it's beautiful. And then showed them very briefly the Central Avenue slide, and then the entryway on the east side of Coquille. Now, tomorrow, we are going to see a fish cleaning station.
All right, Council President Waits.
Chief, how are you following? Are they here?
They're right in the front.
Well, where are they? Oh, yeah, very nice. I just want to wish Ben the best of luck moving on. We know that young people use this kind of as a stepping stone, and we hope to have been able to help you make to that next step. I absolutely don't know why anyone would, like, Councilor Heaton. So, good luck.
Thanks.
I think you're both having a heart a little bit there, being a fiddly man, right? All right, Councilor Spel.
All I can say, Ben, is I hope you like the winters.
He's an Idaho guy.
He is, yeah. Good luck, Ben.
My back still strong.
There you go.
All right, Councilor Shorer.
And, you know, I told him I'm happy for him, but I'm mad at him, so I'm happy to know about him. A couple of things I want to say was that I went down to see the fish cleaning thing, I've never seen one before, so don't fish, and I know I live in Coquille and I've never fished, but anyway, so I went down just to see what I wanted. And the gazebo is beautiful. I drove by it, and just back then I know that Fran has some wonderful pictures to show, so if you haven't gone back, what I did between Ernie's and, you know, the pool, just drive back there, you can kind of see it, it was gorgeous, really, you should go back there and see it. One thing that Dennis didn't mention is that Riverwalk has beautiful posters for $15, and if you haven't seen them, buy them, because I have them and I know they, I have them, I think we put them down at the chamber, and it's the same one that's on the gazebo down on the GP side, and they're beautiful for the walls. I went to several places that had big walls and said you must have this, and so, but do look at them, they're beautiful, and I think we have one of the others down here too. Saturday, I'll be there, it's the Band and Panda Festival Parade, so it's a bad time, but I'll be here, things more important. Also, I went to the Kiwanis Bronze Sale looking for cups and saucers for the Victorian tea, and a friend of mine said, "Look in the box," went up, and I looked in the box, and there were three little kittens, and I went, "Oh." So, I picked up a little black and white kitten, and the man said, "It's a girl," and I said, "Oh, cute, you know, what, seven weeks, seven weeks old, fluffy little black and white." Picked it out, we carried it home and stuffed them, and I took it to the vet, and of course, it's a boy.
Chief, he was a cat.
Yes, I named him Molly when I first got it, and then I found out it's a boy, and I said, "No, no, no," and she said, "Yes, yes, yes." But the problem was, nobody, her mama had never told her how to use a litter box. I didn't know that, cats didn't know how to use a litter box. For two weeks, I was about ready to get rid of him. I went, I called everybody, I went through everything, I tried everything that anybody told me about, and after two weeks, she finally used the litter box. It's her. I know, I was going to name him Walter when I found out it was a boy, and I just couldn't do it, so he's called Mr. Molly.
Why not Ollie?
I couldn't have Ollie, not Ollie. But anyway, so now he's, he's a cute little.
Pointe cat has sort of personality, he's a female, so he's quite a good.
Really, I always thought he was a female, so, okay, but anyway, he's pretty cute.
Just remember, a cute kitten grows up to be a cat.
I know that, but that's better than a dog.
Not first Pennsylvania, now dogs, wow. Only thing, only thing that's slightly less dangerous than picking between beavers and ducks. All right, Councilor Capehart.
Okay, Dennis and I attended the 42 and Spruce, which is a group from Myrtle Point who are fixing their town, and we want to fix our town. We've tried to fix our town many, many times. At RDI, I put on a wonderful seminar attended by almost 50 people, and I told the lady, Ann Mitchell, who's in charge, I said, "I want you to come to Coquille, we need this so bad," but it's first impressions of this city, and so there's more to come, and so I want everybody to come when we have a big meeting on this. We have City Hall Week coming this next week, and some of us will be attending Coos Bay one instead of Roseburg. Coos Bay's a lot closer than Roseburg. And I've been gone for a week because we're planning a great big Stewart Family reunion, so all the Scotsmen are coming to California. Kenya Adobe, that, I'm so glad to be home because six lanes of traffic drive me crazy. I just don't know how those people can live in Letherton, Modesto, and drive to San Francisco and Oakland every day going to work. They have to leave probably at 3:00 in the morning to get there, and then at night, they probably don't leave until 9:00. So, we are so thankful for what we have in Oregon. Road of the Auction is coming October 22nd. Tickets are going to be $10, so see a rotarian if you're interested in coming to that, it's going to be much different this year. And these are pictures if anyone has been down behind the pool to see the gazebo, it's just beautiful. I'll give you one, Ben, to take with you. It's not quite finished, but it is beautiful.
All right, thank you, Fran. Let's move, well, we already did this morning, the officers, so we'll move to agenda number six, staff reports. Let's start with the police chief. In addition to your written report? All right, very good. Any questions for the police chief on this report? All right, very good. Library report for, oh, forgive me.
I understand you sold the Tahoe. How's Kara doing?
Kara's doing well, the dog, she's good.
Does she have wheels? Yes. Comfortable wheels?
What we did was, we converted cheap blue's Tahoe, since it was newer and in better condition and ready to go, so we sort of converted it, and now with the old Tahoe, it was just a K-9 unit in the back, now with cheap blue's Tahoe, she already had a half prisoner cage, and we just converted the other half to the K-9 side, so she has a boot trap, yes.
All right, anything else for the chief? All right, then we'll move to library director for the director's honor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about my report? I told you that I was going to talk to Joe Slack, and I did talk to him. He is going to come and meet with the librarians and professionals at the library on Friday and present us with the stuff that he's put together so far, and we'll discuss that and do some brainstorming, which sounds like fun. If anybody wants to join us, we'll be in the small auditorium at 1:00 on Friday. I will be meeting with him one more time, and then in two weeks, I'll meet with him again, see what he's come up with at that time, and then he will present that to the foundation board at their regular meeting on the last Tuesday of the month, and they will give their input and analyze, give their feedback on what he's come up with so far. So, at least we are moving, we are no longer stagnant. We're very excited.
And when is the next library trivia, then?
It is the first Saturday in November, which is the third or the fifth of December.
That would be the end.
There we go. And the theme is games, 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 games. Board games, video games, sports games, any kind of games, and that will be your theme for your team names and what heightens us up to get prizes. It is not the subject of our trivia questions.
All right, very good. Any questions for Greg Connor?
In terms of the levy?
Yeah.
What does that mean for Coquille Library?
No, that's for museums.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Yes.
Never mind.
Although it's worth it.
I don't know what I was thinking.
We already have a library levy in this area.
Yeah, thanks.
That's why we didn't count with, that's why we didn't close when the O and C money disappeared.
Maybe we could steal it, you know. Do you know what that means?
We'll work on that.
Museum? No idea? Okay.
It's a museum.
In Cheltenham.
All right, let's, if there's no question for Greg Connor, then we'll go on to library report. Now, Chief, before you get started, if you have anything in addition to your report, what is this Saturday?
This Saturday is the Coquille High School Hall of Fame banquet. Doors open at 5:00, dinner's at 6:30 at the community building. We're actually inducting five student athletes from the past, 1975, '76 girl basketball team that took state, or fourth place in state, and just a great night, Friday night, see the Hall of Fame football game, the guys go against Myrtle Point, so, yeah, feel free to come out and support both events for that, so.
How much are tickets to the dinner there, Chief?
Tickets are $15 for an individual, 25 for two, or you buy a whole table for eight people for $100.
All right.
And actually, we have live auction, silent auction, and dessert auction.
I was glad, it's a great community, and I know you're involved in that, so I want to let you get it applied, so. Anything in addition to your report?
I'd just like to thank everyone to come out and supported our 30th Annual Steak Barbecue Car Show the first Saturday in August, it was just a great year, had a record number of cars, under 64 cars in the car show, served by 1,100 meals that day, so it was just a great day. Other than that, I'd just like publicly thank Ben for his leadership and support of the fire service and EMS service of Coquille. You'll actually be best, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
And I don't want you to have to come up too early, but don't we have the open house coming up next month also?
Yeah, open house will be the second Thursday in October, that's National Fire Prevention Week, and we'll have open house from 6:00, or 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the fire station.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Any questions for the fire chief?
Dave, it's the 10th.
Pardon me?
The 10th, it's the Hall of Fame?
Yes, yes, the Saturday is the Hall of Fame.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Mr. Irvin, anything in addition to your report?
Yes, a couple things. First, I'd like to echo a lot of the sentiment from saying, you know, good luck at Pennsylvania, but you'll be missed here, really will. If you look at Councilor Capehart's pictures of the gazebo, you realize that there is a roof that's going on right now, so it's not like open air, so, just, it's super watery.
Will I have seating in it?
What's that?
Some kind of seating?
Yeah, we'll, we're going to put those round tables like we have in other places, and we're going to have, I'm going to get two of the handicap kind, so the handicap can use it, but also that'll leave a lot of space in the middle, so that somebody, you know, like grilling and committed, put things on tables and things like that. So, yeah, we hope to put two rounds, two of those round tables like we have now, except we'll get the ones that have the three seats instead of four, so the middle will be kind of folded, so that's what we'll have in it. I heard from the property owner, or docks are adjacent to their property on the river, he is very reluctant to let us cross his property to get them, and in his words many times, he said, "I really don't want to sound like a jerk," and I'm like, "You're not, what's the problem?" But evidently, he's had a lot of issues with Corv engineers and the county and NOAA about that area, and he was concerned if we just had heavy equipment in there, that they might come back on him and say you did environmental damage, so he says, you know, we're going to have to talk with the Corps first, which means the Corps is going to talk to NOAA, which means county getting involved, I don't know if we're ever going to get those docks back, and they're not on his property, they're, they're on state land next to the river, so he doesn't have to let us cross his property to go get them, I'm fairly certain.
Is that going to retrieve the water?
You know, if the river was high enough and we had a boat with a big enough motor, we might be able to pull them off of there, otherwise, I think you're going to have Otherwise, I think you're gonna have some real difficulty. There's kind of a hump and then it goes down and then it comes back up and dragging them off of there, it's just, I don't, I don't think it'd be very easy. From what the guys have told me, we've been down there and looked at them, they said it'd be tough, tough, tough to do, to get them there. You'd almost need a crane on a barge and at that point, is it worth more to just, you know, get new ones off? So I'm gonna keep working on it to try and get them, but, you know, I don't have real high hopes at this point. Sorry. I got some good news that I can kinda tell you about now, really not supposed to go out until the eighth of the month when this thing is finalized, but ironically, we came in fifth on our Fifth Street Park grant of 14 that they funded. We will be getting $65,000 in new play equipment down at Fifth Street Park. And almost $40,000 of match money, and this is, I don't know, clever maybe, but we used the sale prices and the free shipping from the company as match. And the company actually gave us a quote that lasted till the end of December so that Oregon State Parks could see that this is the equipment we'll get and we will get this discount and so they let us use it as match. So that was really nice of them to do that. So we're gonna get some real nice stuff down there. It'll, it'll be like a bigger version of.
Anything go to the tennis court, anything?
No, that'll have to be another one.
Okay.
These are what they call the small local grants. You can go for large ones and try and get a big pot of money, but they're, they're hard to get, so even doing a little bit piece meal, we're gonna get it done.
Kevin, your report says that Kathy Semenetti raised funds for three gills, grills and picnic tables and I want to thank her because I'm an aficionado, aficionado of the street park, even if it's just the dog park. I thank her.
I was gonna let her tell you about that. It's okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, she'll tell you about it. We worked together on that and I put it in there.
Yes, you can.
I didn't want, I didn't wanna steal her thunder, but thanks for doing that for us.
Sorry.
Aside from that, everything else in the report's just as is. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have a question or comment or something. The other day I was, I was driving down the street and a lady was sitting on the bench, not, not a subway, but kind of a little farther down by Napa and she was sitting there eating a sandwich with the door of her car open and I noticed that. She had a license if I'm out of town, out of state. So I said to her, I said, "You know, we have a park down the street." And then I got to thinking, do we have a sign that says, "We have a turn of a park, you know, for a picnic area, a half a block, I mean, half a mile or something on the left." And then I thought, do we say, "Think, do we have?" It's with some of the other places. I don't know if we do or not and I didn't, I did go down, I actually went down by the produce place to check it out. And I know we have some other signs, but I thought, you know, for somebody that's never been in town and wanna pay, it would might be nice if we had signs that kinda said that because I know when I first moved to town, we wanna go on a picnic because I have an eye and so has the Laverne Park. This was a long time ago, so we turned to go to Laverne Park, not going down 30 miles away. That's not the same now, but I'm just saying, but I thought, oh, that'd be kinda nice if people knew that we did have a park.
No, I've been here almost five years. No, I can't answer that question either. I would have to drive along there and see.
We do have some signage on 42, eastbound if you're going east. And, I mean, highway, wouldn't that be an ODOT issue we'd have to deal with?
Yeah, we'd have to ask them to put the sign up.
No, that's a good point, though. I mean, the funny thing is, I see the signage 'cause, I mean, I just notice it. Like, a lot of people say, "I don't see," they drive right by DMV and they say, "I didn't notice the park." There's a sign that says City Park with an arrow right there, you know. Sometimes signage is just hard to see and sometimes we tune it out the longer we live here, so. But no, that is a good thing, maybe better, more, more noticeable signage is a better thing. Because I was, I was involved with an event that was held down there a few weeks ago and I'm like, "I never even noticed it was here and I've lived here my whole life," so maybe we do need to petition ODOT for some better signage. That's a good point, 'cause it is a gem, you know.
Yeah, and at some point I'd love to have some kind of venue down there. I know I've tried before to have a stage or something like that. If we ever get something like that, then we can have the blue signs like they have for the, for the produce market. They cost like a couple hundred bucks a year, but it's not bad if you, you know, 20 people you're part of.
All right, thank you gentlemen. Well, is there any other color?
In Ben's summary on, he talks about the park's master plan and you're gonna have a public meeting with the Planning Commission for approval. The Recreation Committee saw the draft, but we've never seen the final version of that master plan. Are we gonna get a chance to see that before it's approved?
And there weren't, any changes that you made to it were made?
I mean, take that to make, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, any, anything that you voted on to change, was changed.
All right, any other questions for Director Irvin?
I can double chat for you. I know you wanted to have a bathroom in the park, in the New Jefferson School Park up there and I think they added that in, I'm almost certain.
All right, very good. If there's anything else, then we'll move on to Finance Director Duffner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I need to announce publicly is that the investment accounts with Seattle Northwest are earning 2.79% in duration of balance 2.51 years. And if you have any questions on this report, I'd be glad to.
All right. You know, you're always so long on those reports, you go so long. Now, we gotta give Chuck the Real a word of credit here. He mentioned in his report with the public, you know, he's dealing with family health issues and he's still a soldier on being here, so props to Chuck for being able to make it work tonight and I really appreciate his being here and I hope his life has a very speedy recovery. All right, I always ask our city attorney, whoever it is sitting in the chair, and of course, this city attorney used to sit in my chair, so is there any, well, it could be somebody else's chair too. So I was gonna say, Mr. Marchant, is there anything you'd like to share regarding your job as city attorney?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't have anything really substantive to add, other than it's nice to see everybody after a long absence. Also, I know on behalf of myself and the entire staff at our law firm, we would like to wish Mr. Marchant a, a good farewell and hopefully he does very well with you and his family when they make the transition to Pennsylvania. So we appreciate all your help. And I would also say that you were a very good hire. Thank you for being such a good city manager. That's it. I don't have anything else unless Council has any specific questions or anything on each of them.
Anything for Attorney Marchant? All right, oh, did you have some one? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, the City Manager's report. Ben, anything in addition to your written report?
Yeah, let me, let me get to that. First, I'll start with item one, just asking for if the Council's interested in giving any direction about the direction of the community building position, whether it was gonna go towards the more robust full-time description or stick with the part-time as we have it.
What we have now, I don't know.
And the budget, we budgeted for 15 hours a week. We don't have anyone in the position.
What have we done since then left? Nothing?
Nothing really. And then people come to the utility building window here and take care of their reservations or do it on the phone.
Well, I was gonna say, this is one thing we did talk about in open session after our executive session a few weeks ago, forgive me, and we didn't get a chance to. This is one of the things we did catch up on when we got, we got back into town, is that the Council is gonna reanalyze the whole thing once we get a new permanent city manager placed.
Okay. So another, well, first I'd like to thank everybody for their well wishes and just say that this has been the favorite place I have ever lived, my favoritest place. The people have been so warm and friendly and supportive. The staff has been absolutely a wonderful pleasure to work with. I feel like we've had a lot of great times, got a lot of great things accomplished in a very short period of time. I am so thankful for the privilege that the Council and those who've served on the Council have given me to serve here and I really am gonna miss this place terribly and so I wanna thank you for that. One of the things that I've noticed is, as my time has wound down, is that I have suggestions and ideas that keep coming forth and people are less and less interested in hearing them. So now that I have control of the mic for a moment, I'll give you two more pieces of advice. What about the docks? And I think Kevin, you're gonna like this one. See if you can apply to the Army Corps of Engineers, the State Marine Board, NOAA for a grant to clean up litter on the river's edge. And they may supply the crane and we may offer to dispose of the litter for them right back through our river. It just might work.
Very clever.
And that's how Kevin and I have worked. And for signage on 42, a one-way around ODOT would be that great canvas of the backside of Nostr's building. You just do a bright yellow line, Central Boulevard, Fifth Street Park, Dog Park, Second Street, Pool. And I, I think you could have that impact without getting into the weeds of the bureaucracy, so.
Especially if we use lead paint.
Well, they won't know if it was pre-.
Yeah, exactly.
So we've had a lot of great things accomplished in this time here and I wanna thank you for that.
All right, anything on Manager Marchant's final report?
I have one, one question before he goes out the door and slams it behind you. You, before I mentioned it, you've been talking to ODOT about a refuge island and a crosswalk on 42 at Birch.
Yes.
Is there anything going on about that?
You know, they told me August of 2015 that they had it on their schedule to do it and I talked to Darren Nevel in about April or May of this year and he said, "Oh yeah, that's still on our project list." And he said he'd get back to me and I haven't heard from him yet.
So is something we're gonna have to follow up on?
It is. They have approved it, they're favorable towards it, they were willing to do the work and so we're just waiting for them to perform.
They probably had a little slide issue.
A slide on 42 probably threw them off.
Yeah, well, crosswalk, I don't care about that slide on 42. Did you hear?
Yeah, yeah, there's always one on that. Any other questions?
I wanna know about the, about the 200-page audit on Jefferson. Has anybody, I see that you completed, does anybody have it or?
Yeah, it's in Kevin's desk, is the building's maintenance version of the city.
Come that too?
Oh, yeah. Well, you don't have the maintenance person, you're in charge of all facilities from within your department.
They say please.
And you need a new root here there or anywhere, it's gonna come across Kevin's desk, but, so that report does identify that the building's in great condition considering and that it has a few maintenance issues, just the couple areas that the roof needs to be repaired and that for the most part is pretty stable. It was a very complimentary report.
Okay, 'cause I had heard somebody, a couple people said to me they heard about some leaky problems in Jefferson. I didn't know anything about it, so.
Yeah, and the old Library Media Center, there's some mold on the walls where it has leaked and that would be a priority area to get that all cleaned out and fixed up. But as I was putting together a spreadsheet of all the leases we have at that facility, we're up to seven or eight now and it is considerably higher use than it was previously with nothing and it'd be vacant for years and it's providing a lot of beneficial use to the community, so I'm very proud to see that happen.
All right. Anything else for the manager for his final report?
Are some of these things that we've talked about on our goals and all those things that we have that's on your list, is this something now that we're gonna take seriously when we get a new city manager and start in on this few things?
That may be a question for Council in January. I mean, clearly the values of the Council aren't the same right now and so we're gonna stick to what we're doing, but.
Well, that is on his, yeah, we're not doing much, we need to start pulling in on some of these things.
All right, anything else for the City Manager? There you go. Close the books up. And you're still on the clock, don't you? What about me tomorrow?
I'll be at the Rotary Club meeting for the, in my last business.
There you go, if anybody, anybody just needs to see him one more time, there are a few hours more.
I'll be down there at Fraser's.
All right, very good. Thank you very, very much, Ben. Public participation, now I have found out that apparently everybody signed a public participation sheet instead of the normal sign-in sheet and so we have a situation where we're not sure who everybody wants to talk, so I'll just go with the show I answer wants to talk. All right, so we're gonna go clockwise, so I'll start with Mr. Valeria, come on down. Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand, you were out the way. I didn't see you there. I'll start with the.
We were, by the way, first on the list anyway, so.
Oh, there you go. And even though we know who you are, name and address for the record?
Shannon Lynn, Avenue 2, Seven Figure, Fall River Street.
Oh, and one other thing, this is not pointed towards you at all because you are generally pretty greefer to the point, but somebody who wanted to talk, yeah, let's try and keep it close to as three minutes possible if we can. Nothing about you, you're always on point, I'm not bad about that, I'm not trying to rush you.
Okay, I'll let you decide.
All right, let's go.
I have something that I wanna read to the City Council that is about Operation Kokil and how Operation Kokil has not misused your funds, but I also have a report regarding the garden tour and the hanging flower baskets. So if you don't mind if I read this, it's gonna be kinda difficult for me, but I think that you are owed an explanation. So, on July 13th.
Can I, what is your affiliation with the?
I am the Secretary and Treasurer of Operation.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
On July 13th, 2016, Gene Ivey wrote a defamatory article in the Sentinel stating that Operation Kokil had been gutted. The article contained outright lies and spurious innuendo. I am appalled that Operation Kokil must defend itself against such outrageous tripe. However, because the city of Kokil generously donates money to the projects that are supported by Operation Kokil, I will sit before you and offer an explanation. Operation Kokil is not gutted. It is true that the organization needs more board members, especially since our president, Lowell Thomas, resigned as a result of this article. The Hanging Flower Basket Project was not taken over by the Garden Club. The truth is that the Garden Club asked Operation Kokil if they could share the water truck this summer. The club signed a contract with Operation Kokil and a few of their members drove the water truck occasionally. And even though the Hanging Flower Basket is finished for the season, the Garden Club still has use of the water truck until mid-October and I'm driving it for these women who are walking behind it and watering their planters, which are absolutely stunning by the way. The farmers' market was dropped because it was not viable, mainly due to lack of loyal vendors, without which there's no market. It just was a simple business decision. We reported it to the city manager immediately and told him that Operation Kokil no longer needed a farmers' market grant in 2017. None of the other projects are finding new homes. Operation Kokil has not misused the city's donations and we can account for every penny. I encourage anyone who has questions about the financial status of Operation Kokil to contact me at secretary@operationkokil.com. We are entering a phase of looking for new board members. I am a person who can do the books, but I'm not the person to go out and rally people. We need another one to shore. If you know anyone who has the ability and the vision to lead the organization, it's a great 501(c)(3), it could do all the things that you were talking about with the 42nd Street in Riverpoint. It's a wonderful organization and it was hard to get. I'm keeping it open for people to come forward and take it. So you can keep an eye on the Operation Kokil website as more information will be forthcoming regarding. So, you can keep an eye on the Operation Kokil website as more information will be forthcoming regarding its allegations. So.
Thank you, Shannon. Shannon, you've done a great job, and there are some people in this city who want to maybe be jealous of what you've done, but I thank you very much.
And I also want to say a friend of mine has been with you, when you've done your work so many straightening out of Operation Kokil, and she has nothing but high praise for you and the way you did it.
Thank you. I, the books are transparent. Anybody could walk in there at any time, and they could print any report, given what they need. I, we have nothing to hide on that. So, thank you. Now onto happier stuff. Would you just like me to give you these reports?
That'd be for the best.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. All right, Don, did you want to come on down too?
Yeah.
And again, just so everybody knows, name and address for the record, and let's try and keep it close to three minutes. Great job there on doing that, even though there was a lot to talk about.
I am not following the call. Don Valeria, 275 Narvald. I am the Acting President of Operation Kokil. In 2003, Lowell and I formed Operation Kokil. I took the paperwork to say with myself. And I ran that organization for two years until it was to the point where Lowell could take over it, and then I dropped out, because that was my purpose. I was recently, a couple of years ago, asked to come back in and help the organization, so I did. I want to give you some background on projects. Operation Kokil was not formed to have large projects and keep those projects in perpetuity. We were formed to facilitate other groups that wanted to do projects. There are certain projects, like the flower baskets and the hanging planters, that make sense for us to handle year to year, but some of them don't make sense. I will remind you, the Carousels, did they not start out with Operation Kokil?
I do not know.
And they have graduated and do their own thing, did the Riverwalk, start out with Operation Kokil. We didn't. We didn't keep that project, we moved it on when it was ready to go. I'll give you another example of projects that we move on. I run through Operation Kokil a school called Kokil Valley Traditional Skills Center, and we teach all those disaster-prepared, destructive skills that are necessary in the time of trouble. We have 300 courses, and we teach everything from making and firing pots out of mud and getting a campfire to blacksmithing and the whole nine yards. That organization will eventually outgrow Operation Kokil. When that organization does, I will take it independent. It won't be in Operation Kokil, but it will be independent because of my decision and not the dictates of some two-bit, poorly-written rag. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all the help that you guys have given us over the years.
You may.
You're the guys making the call.
I do not think they, me, were involved with the Carousels, but Lowell Thomas was very involved with the swimming pool, and Operation Kokil was under the swimming pool because I was president, so I know that.
Thank you. And we don't have a swimming pool project anymore, they just roll through, so.
Well, you did a good job, and then you did the.
Good game.
Yeah.
Thank you, Don. Bob Land, oh, no, it's, I'm sorry, I'm more of a wood name, so you look familiar, but come on down and say your name and address for the record.
My name is Annie Krenzel, 672 South Fourth Court, and I've worked with Shannon at the garden club and the garden tour, and she has always been accountable, has made us accountable. I have, I, the information that was printed in The Sentinel was outrageous. There were a lot of very hurt feelings, and I realize that, you know, some people's feelings get hurt easily. But when you have dedicated time, countless hours of time, to support this community, and somebody has the audacity and the lack of caring that this Sentinel has, and the information that she needed was very readily available, but she chose not to seek accurate information, it is a reflection on the city. Somebody coming through and reading this kind of paper, it is not a reflection of the city that I hold so dear in my heart. And she should be ashamed of herself.
All right, Thomas Kanamas. Now, I know who you're gonna get name and address for the record, and I think I know what you want to talk about. We talked about it at Safeway the other day.
Hi, I'm Thomas Kanamas, 370 North Colliver Street. I've got a little dog, okay, and I know Susan has a dog, and I kick my dog out for a walk twice a day on a leash. You folks want to see this? There's $3,077 worth of fines that my neighbor has secured from the city because of her dog. She's allowed to have the dog run around and walks without being charged. I have to, when I take my dog for a walk, I take it down certain streets, because I know the owner of certain houses have dogs out that will challenge my dog. That dog that is on a leash is not, let me put it this way, if the dog is off-leash and meets another dog that's on a leash, that dog's on leash is not in a favorable position. So, you're gonna have a problem. I've seen, I've had it happen so many times where I turn a corner, the dog's off the leash, and the dog attacks my dog. Why in the heck don't we have a leash law in this town? I mean, I've, I mean, I've seen, my neighbor who I've, who I've talked about, her dog, point-blank, was gonna attack me, and my dog, when I pulled that, came off the leash. I've got my dog off the leash now, that dog attacking me. I mean, come on. I can't go to Sternum Park and have my dog off the leash. I was at, I was up at Fairview, Sternum, that little swimming pool up there. It says on the beach, no dogs on the beach, but a dog can run down the street. Why?
I didn't know, we didn't have a leash law.
I want to know why.
I didn't know we didn't have one.
You didn't come into City Hall to talk to me about that the other day, and at the time I told you we didn't have a leash law, and upon further review, it's not a leash law, but we do prohibit dogs at large, and we do cite people for dogs running at large, and, you know, if they're not on a leash, they're considered at large.
No, they're not. They're not.
Yes.
No, because I've walked, I have seen people walk down the street with their dog 10 feet away, and that is not against the law.
It is technically against the law, and then by.
If it goes in, if it goes on private property, like, like the other day it happened to me, then yes, it is against the law. But if it's on the city streets, walking down a sidewalk, not on private property, that dog can do that.
I know. For the sake of simplicity, I don't want to have all this back and forth, just because it goes against the standard protocol.
Officer.
I was gonna ask the chief, though. Chief, what do you think about this as far as enforcement of the.
As far as I know, you can walk down the street with your dog, and it does not have to be on the.
All right. Matt, could we have you go through the ordinance book and see what we've got on file for this issue, and then we can, and then just follow up with me directly, and we can talk about what maybe if you suggest we need an ordinance on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I'll follow up with you once I have an answer on that, Thomas.
Thank you. One of the, you talked about the, what's that? Would you say 3,000 what?
$3,077 in fines.
For something else?
For the slave, my neighbor, over the years. If you want to see it, I got it right there. I had, let's see, is it last August? Her dog, like I said, the incident with her dog not coming off the leash, she lied and said I was going her driveway at midnight with my dog in her backyard. We can't get into her backyard if I was up her driveway at midnight, that's why we're blowing away.
So, what are the fines for?
Dog at large.
Ah, okay.
If you want to see these, you can.
No, no, I believe you, I just didn't.
Yeah.
If we don't have a leash law, I just wonder.
Dog at large. She escaped away, she skipped out on a $160 fine in North Bend last year because she lied about that, about me going up her driveway, which I don't.
Well, I think that's an interesting issue that we need to pay a look at.
And like I said, once Matt gets me an answer, then I'll.
I would like to know also.
Oh, no, no, I'll make sure the council gets some.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Thomas. All right, now, again, let's see the hands again, so I know where we're at. All right, so it's all just a front row at this point. Mr. Johnson, come on down.
My name is George Johnson, I live at 1249 West Fourteenth Street. Before I start, Ben, I want to say best of luck on your new adventure. I've enjoyed working with you a lot over the years. I'm here to talk about the Pioneer Cemetery. How many know where the Pioneer Cemetery is in Kokil? It's across the street from the high school on Elm Street. You go up there, the end of where Seventeenth Street is, on the left is the Pioneer Cemetery. Early Ambling, when he was working with Schroders, they took care of it, the upkeep of it, and kept it watered in the summer, and it looked really nice. And, of course, he sold out, and somebody else took it over, and they did a good job too. They kept it up pretty good, but since then, they have bought out the Myrtle Grove Cemetery, and now it, Myrtle Grove, if you go up there, it really looks nice, and they let the other one go. And I've gone to see Jay's three or four times, and when I do, the weeds are probably this high in that cemetery, and it just is disgraceful. And so, when I go see him, he goes ahead and bring, his man will come up the next day and do all the mowing. It's easy mowing, it's all flat, and all the stones are flat too, you know, so it's no real big problem. And I asked him, when they asked him if they were watered, and he said, well, he said, no, he said, I said, well, do you have a sprinkling system? He says, yeah, we have a brand-new sprinkling system there, but he said it costs too much to water in the summer. And so, I'm here to see and ask the council, is there any way they could have a special rate on the water there to water that cemetery? I think it would help beautify Kokil, and my goodness, that's the last resting place for a lot of people, going, we ought to keep it up. And it's no big deal. He says it cost him a little over $1,000 in the past to keep it watered during the summer, but I'm just here to ask if there's another rate, could they have a lesser rate or something? Because I think, I think they owe it to all the people that are there to keep it looking kind of halfway decent. I can't believe, Ben told me that if you let one, you gotta let the other one. But I really can't believe that people in Kokil would complain if you gave them a rate to keep that cemetery looking kind of neat, nice.
Do we have a rate?
Sprinkle rate.
What is it, is it 25 cents?
50.
Excuse me?
50.
50 cents.
50 cents a thousand?
Yeah. It depends on if it's an irrigation meter or not.
Oh, I, okay, all right, you're right.
Is that, is that the sprinkle rate, what they refer to?
Pardon?
Is that the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's an irrigation meter, which is just a whole different rate structure.
As opposed to?
Just standard residential or commercial rates.
Okay, all right, so the residential rate for the summertime is 25 cents a thousand, is that correct?
50 cents per thousand.
Everybody?
It's a little more complicated than that, but yes.
I got you.
Everybody who is residential, let me clarify, commercial rates don't apply to that.
Is a cemetery residential?
Sorry.
People are staying there.
Are they charged residential?
Well, they could be charged for units, you know, this evening. You know, I don't know off the top of my head if any of the cemeteries, I would have to look at that.
Is that something that maybe is a possibility, that that would kind of take care of, I find out whether it's called a charge.
To have the meter as an irrigation meter, it's something we could look into, how it's structured now. I know, though, there hasn't been water usage in the amount of time that I've worked here at the Pioneer Cemetery, so three years.
What I would suggest is that we look through the ordinances and the V books and see what we can find with the existing code before we look at a special rate, but, no, I mean, we need to keep these things up. I'm in complete agreement with you, Mr. Johnson, so, I mean, it's a, it's a sacred place.
Well, what about the.
That's what I would say about it, it would help beautify Kokil.
Well, there's no guarantees you're gonna pay it if it's, you know, 25 cents, so. Yeah, we need to talk to the owner before we do anything.
Well, that is very true, that is, I'm doing good, good.
However, George, are you mowing it, George? You mentioned the grass was as high, is he gonna mow it?
They did come and mow it, yeah. He said that he's responsible. He used to take care of it, and he said that he's responsible for taking care of it, but he said he puts it off, and puts it off, and puts it off, and so on. That's where you look very up there, and I go up there quite a bit, and I just, it's disgraceful.
Oh, great.
But right now, it looks nice. The next day, he came down, I had to go with this three times, I had to go having come out there and then mow it. They have a brand-new mower right there in the shed there, you know, and it doesn't take too long to do it, but, you know, I was, I really hit the ceiling when I saw it. I came back from Montana, I'd been there a couple months, and I couldn't believe it, the weeds are up there, it was high. And so, I went to see him the next day, and he said, well, he said, yeah, it's my fault, he said, I just worked in out here and forget it. So, he sent someone out there the next day, and they mowed it, it looks nice. And that's when I approached him about the water. I said, it's a very simple place, he's got sprinkling secondary, keep it looking kind of nice during the summer. And his complaint was, he said, the water costs him too much to water, and I said, you didn't do it.
I was here to ask you. Councilor Eaton wanted to jump in here.
I've, I had a job to do with the, what we used to call Pioneer Cemetery at Six and Birch. Pam and Dave Smith worked very, very hard to get that straightened out. I queered off some vines from a stone, and it was a 21-year-old man, and on the inscription it said he was a good son, which still tears me up. They worked hard, they worked very hard, and I did a little of it, so I know how hard they worked. We were thinking that it belonged to the city at that time, but we found out that it's the IOOC that owns it. Well, a lot of them are older now, they're not gonna keep it up, and I don't think they even, some of them realize it's there.
Well, I'm sure they do.
It's a fire hazard in the summertime, because the grass is very, very tall. There's no way to water it, there's no watering over there. So, I think all over the city, we need to get people aware that the cemeteries do hold our citizens, even if they're not active citizens anymore, and we need to take care of those places as an honor to them.
Yeah, well, I, that sounds nice. The one across from my high school is the Sonic Cemetery, and they, their people come out, keep the grass up pretty regularly and things like that. But, yeah, this one, I, you know, I grew up in that neighborhood, and I threw kites in the graveyard, because the Mardales and the Johnsons and the Menards and all of us, we made kites in old days, and we'd go to the graveyard there to fly them, because there were main power lines around. And I have a lot of special memories of that place. But I'm just asking that, he said that he could, it's not a lot of work on the upkeep, you know, you go out there one day and he mows it along, looks really nice, but I thought it'd be nice if they could keep it maybe green during the summer, early green, maybe, out. And he said, well, he would water it if he figured a special rate maybe.
They're gonna look into that.
Pardon?
They're gonna look into that, to see if there are two different rates and what they're being charged.
Okay, okay.
Back to you.
Now, another thing I had, I get three minutes, but I get three minutes for each thing.
Not amount of respect, yes.
Okay, well, the other thing, I came in here, we had that petition, but I didn't know about the Earl, or the Earl was put in our presidential area. And I popped the van, and the van said, well, you've had too many people showing up. I didn't know you wanted people showing up, I probably saw you, I mean, everybody in the presidential, sort of pool. And I checked the van, and we have to pay the money, we don't worry about tickets, we just want them all to come. And so, this year, we advertised on the reader board down there for two weeks. And then the day we had the free swim day, they charged us. We went in early, to ask the parents, and said, how do you like the corner free swim day? And they said, well, I'd have paid, that's for children, I'd have paid 15 dollars. And so, anyhow, we were kind of upset about that, because it kind of looks bad for the corners, you know? We advertise, and we've done this every year, and then we don't pay up, they don't get in free. But I did talk to the business manager, and he was very nice, and he found out the problem, and he went down there and he took care of it. and he went down there and he took care of it, as best he could. He gave us Saturday, we were swimming on Wednesday, and he set it up, put it on our leaderboard so we could swim on Saturday. And the kids did show, I don't know how many came up, did you go down and check to see?
Well, sir, I haven't checked.
I went early, and there was, they were coming in. But anyhow, yeah, we were kind of disappointed on that, because we advertise a lot, and we like to help kids, and we like to have everybody come swim, especially those that can't afford to come on a regular time, so we hope, just doesn't happen again, you know, we, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, anything for Mr. Johnson?
You will check on that water rate, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, Kathy Semenetti, come on down.
Kathy Semenetti, pick an address, 16 East First Street, Kokil. First, I'd like to talk about Fifth Street Park. About three years ago, well, actually, going back eight years ago, it was probably one of the worst parks in Kokil. It was riddled with drugs and juvenile delinquents and kids that were truant, and it was a mess. Thanks to the police department and some hard efforts of the community, we managed to clean that park up, and I'm kind of proud to say it's been pretty much drug-free for about two years now. I don't think you've had any, other than the graffiti a couple of weeks ago, but I don't think there's been drugs in the bushes or anything like that. So, I am, when the opening came up for Parks and Recreation, you know, I had applied to be under committee, and they were gracious enough to appoint me. Well, one of the things, my theory was that the more people we can get to come to the park, the less chances of the people with the drugs, you know, they don't go to highly populated areas. So the, so my idea was to put in barbecue grills at Fifth Street Park to keep the families and community members attending there. Well, we were hoping, I had talked to Kevin, and he, we were hoping for the state grant last year, but it didn't come in. And so, this year, I went to Kevin and asked if it was a possibility, if I could fundraise for it, and he said, sure, go for it. So, with the help of Kiwanis, Rotary, Hussets, and Figaro's, I was able to raise $660, I think it was about 660 or 630, something like that, for
So, what's 630?
Three barbecue grills. And so, I just wanted to publicly thank everybody for that and for working with us on that. And wouldn't you know, right after I gave you the check, the grant came, and he said, I think you better sit down on this one, right?
Now, look, we have six grills.
Yes, and now we have six grills and six new picnic tables along with our playground equipment. And I'm really proud to say we have the dog park gang out there now, we have people using the tennis courts again, and it really is nice, families are coming back, and I think I took some pictures to show Kevin of the birthday parties and the special events that are out there, so I'm really happy about that, and I thank everybody for supporting us. Now, as president of the Chamber of Commerce, Ben, I would like to say thank you very much for everything that you have done for us and your guidance in helping me to bring the chamber up to snuff, I think. And unfortunately, I forgot to go get your plaque, and so, you know, it's really embarrassing. So, maybe tomorrow at Rotary, I could have handed to you, or we could meet at the Sentinel so we could get a picture of you with the plaque, and I really apologize, because I don't normally make those kind of mistakes. The other thing is, I'm not sure, as president of the Parks and Recreation, if we ever formally thanked Rotary for the $5,000 to put towards the gazebo, and I apologize for that to Fran and other Rotary members. And I think I should write a letter, a thank you letter, to Rotary for the $5,000 for the gazebo at Redmond Park. I don't, I didn't send out a letter, a thank you note to Rotary. We did never formally thank them, did we?
I don't think so. I was gonna, you know, have a formal opening of it.
Okay, well, today at Rotary, we had discussed getting a plaque for it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay, so we will do that, and then do something to thank Rotary.
You bet.
Okay, gotcha.
I think it'll be appropriate when the time comes to have a ribbon cutting and a formal public ceremony and that kind of celebration, and once the project is done is when we send that thank you.
Okay, that's in sure, okay, so that's all I have to say, I just want to make sure that everybody's feelings were hurt or anything.
Okay, thank you for your participation with the Fifth Street Park, it's coming alive, you know, not just dogs.
Well, I have to thank Matt for appointing me on that committee, because it's really been a pleasure, and I have to thank Dennis Graham, because he's, I kind of, when I became president, I came in behind him, and he has been a great leader and a mentor to me, so thank you again for everything.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Mrs. Pinkston, come on down. Name and address for the audio record, please.
My name is Jackie Pinkston, I live at 490 East First here in Kokil. And what I want to thank you for is the great day we have the National Night Out on August 2nd, and I don't know, it may have been in somebody's report somewhere, but we helped on a committee with that, and I wanted to say our P Club always looks for places to be over the half, and we had cotton candy there, and it was just a great night, and as far as I know, we had over 400 people there, and we changed the venue a couple of different times, but I know a lot of things happened, we had your barbecue just shortly thereafter, so it was kind of, you know, busy there, but I think it really just felt like a big community, I don't know, I mean, it wasn't a hot block, but I mean, where a lot of people get together and we just shared things, and there was, there were all the ages there, there were little ones and strollers, we had young families, we had students, it was really a great night, and I really appreciate, I forget who you told me, who was the actually coordinator that you had from here?
Sorry, Wallace.
Yes. And I just think that we sometimes, you know, we work really hard on getting something like this together, and it happens every time, then we move on to our next thing, and that's good, and that's right, but I think it's important to thank people, too, because we were hoping when we had our committee meeting here a couple of times, that we'd have, you know, maybe a little over 200 people, and we had 400, and I probably didn't count somebody's small child or dog or something, too, but wanted you to know, but we really appreciate that, and it's important that we do these kind of things with our community, because we really feel community, and it is important to thank, we have so many people to thank, I mean, the, I know we want to thank the police department, sheriff's department, and the fire department, and it was fun, you had some different kinds of things going on, and we want to do that next year, and make it something that people really look forward to, you know, having a part of, because there wasn't a place in front of the community building, or by the chamber, or even close to close, all that was being taken up with activity and things happening, and so, I just want to say thank you for helping us with it, and we just look forward to next year.
We'll put you on the list, Jackie.
On the what?
We'll put you on the list.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to remain on the list in helping other kids to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, fun time, thank you.
All right, did anybody else want to say anything? All right, we've got our last person, it looks like, then. State your name and address for the record, so the tape can save it all.
My name is Kathleen Gimmie, I'm the editor of the Sentinel. And I'm reading a letter, there you go, ma'am, Jean Ivy. My address, East First Street, number 16. Just a few moments of your time. Oh, and by the way, last week, the Sentinel printed the municipal code for dogs. Anybody else want to check it out? Okay. I apologize for not appearing before you. Tuesday is our press day, and I must be available. The Sentinel is planning a candidate's forum to be held on the evening of October 14. As you know, we have traditionally hosted a forum previous to city elections containing roster candidates. We do not advertise the Sentinel at these events and hold them for the benefit of the voter. We secure an unbiased moderator, in this case, David Jennings, and hold a meet and greet after taking questions. We have never been charged for the use of the community building in the past, and ask that the fees for this event be waived. Fran will tell you that we have always liked the facility as good or better than we found it. Thank you for your consideration, Jean Ivy. Thank you.
All right, thank you for sharing that with us. Let's move to the consent calendar. As you can We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, or if anybody wants to, we can do, and whatever everybody wants to please.
Can you sign?
Well, the next meeting will be before their
Yeah, if we want to run the agenda, that would be great.
Yeah, does anybody want to put this on the agenda?
I make a motion to prolong the agenda.
All you need is to raise a hand with three.
Sure.
Good, there you go. No need for a motion. All right, and let's see, regarding the consent calendar, as you can see, we had a transition with a baby being born and a city recorder leaving and a number of other things, and so Jennifer is drinking out a fire hose here, and I do not envy her position, she has got a lot to take on, she's doing a stellar job, but the minute minutes got a little bit mangled, and so I'd like to, we're gonna fix those up for the next meeting and vote on the last three minutes of the next meeting, if that's all right with everybody. Let's strike item A from the consent calendar, if there's no objection. And then, hearing no objection, then we'll only vote on item B on the consent calendar. All those in favor of adopting the revised consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, agenda, item 10, mayor and council appointment of the interim city manager. I would strongly recommend, and I know it was in the council packet, and I'm sure probably everybody here, I hope agrees, that we, I would love to hear a motion appointing Finance Director Chuck Dufner, interim city manager.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chuck Dufner the Kokil interim city manager.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, effective immediately, or effective tomorrow noon, yeah. All right, what's in your motion, it was just effective, whatever, but, okay, okay. And Lauren actually seconded, too, so we got a lot of seconds here, good enthusiasm. Council President, we second. Discussion, hearing none, then, all those in favor of making the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, surplus property rescue truck.
Yes, Mayor and Council. In my report, we received a 19, or actually, 1989, we received a 1985 rescue vehicle from a fellow in Air Force Base in California, our surplus program. We used it for quite a few years for our Gaza light, Gaza light vehicle. It's been out of service for approximately two years now, and so, we don't have to use for it anymore, so we'd like to surplus out. We'll go to bids, I'll advertise for that, and the money we make, just put back into our corporate reserve fund.
All right, very good. Is there any motion on the subject, on this issue?
I'll move that the surplus 1958 crew cab truck, we allow sealed bids for putting it as surplus property, and get something out of it.
All right, Councilwoman Eaton made the motion, Council President, we second its discussion. Hearing none, then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 12, accept quotes for inflow and infiltration work. Ms. Irvin? It's pretty explanatory, it's still
Yeah, it very well is, but as you all probably know, DEQ requires this as part of our NPDES permit. It's one of the things that we have to do, is work on our I and I issue, and so, we figured we would work on the biggest problem that we know about first, and we know that the manholes that are kind of down along Cunningham Creek and in the low areas are actually spraying water into cracks, so they need to be redone, and we also want to look at that line and see if there's any major problems with it as far as it taking on water. And so, that's what these are for. We went out for three quotes from three different companies, and we only got one quote back on each of the projects.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept those quotes.
All right, motion's been made, second. All right, the motion's been made, add a second, discussion, hearing none, then, boom, all those in favor of accepting quotes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, award quote for inflow infiltration work.
A little bid, no, explain the little bid for me, would you please?
Well, we've got two projects, one is to do the relining of the manhole, and the other is to do the inspection of what is basically our large interceptor line. It's something that we can't do with our truck, there's just no way in the world we can get to that.
Right.
I mean, as it is, we're probably gonna have to get some swamp pads from any of them that can even get these folks down in there, so.
So these two separate projects and these two separate bids come from the same company?
Correct, but we put those out to two other companies who do this kind of work, and they did not work. So, we met our criteria for quoting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the, award the quote of $103,763 to the Michaels Corporation for the manhole rehabilitation, and can we put those up both the same motion?
Yes.
Okay. And to award the quote of $67,076 to the Michaels Corporation for the line belted inspection.
All right, Council President, we've made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Eaton, second, discussion. Hearing none, then, all those in favor of awarding the quotes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, ordinance 1505, annexation of Krust's property at 5037 North Henry Street. Ben, do you want to speak on this briefly? I know the members of the council probably were at this, but let's share a little.
Yep, there is a typo on there, babe?
Yes.
1537, what do we do? The address.
Ah, 1537.
1537, yes, thank you. So, I was just noticing in the packet, I'm actually missing the actual ordinance page.
Well, but if it hasn't been posted, we can't vote on it until you get that to the charter, so
Right.
We can just wait and punt that until the next meeting.
We'll postpone that to the next meeting, and I'll apologize to Ms. Kupstis, because she's very excited to have this happen, and she's very supportive of it, as you can see by her letter, but everything is on order otherwise.
Yeah, I'm sure she'll be fine.
That's a big description.
Yeah, that's not the
That's the exhibit A. There was supposed to be the ordinance in front of that, and it's, they didn't get in the packet.
It's a minor thing, we can take care of.
Yeah, so we'll punt that to the next meeting, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them down. What this is, is the property just north of Ross Estates. They were out of town during the winter months when I went around and put hand-delivered invitations to participate in the annexation if they so desired, and when they got that notice in June, they came forward and asked what could be done to be annexed into the city, and I indicated that, you know, the long and the short of it, if they sent a letter to the city requesting annexation and were to agree to the terms of the annexation agreement, and that they would be paying the system development charges associated with connecting to city water and sewer and that sort of thing, then they could be annexed pursuant to the city council's approval. And so, they said yes, and I prepared the annexation agreement and ordinance consistent with the same way we did it for Ross Estates, and that's what you will get to review next month.
All right, very good, thank you very much, Ben. And then, if there's nothing else for the good of the order?
Are we going to vote on the way we're going to cost that?
It'll be on the agenda for the next meeting, which is gonna be in a couple of weeks, so. Hold on that ordinance at the same time, also, let's notice properly. All right, and is there anything else for the good of the order? Well, hearing none, then, have fun, hopefully people show up to the Hall of Fame, I know it's always a blast, and obviously, we're gonna have the great Kokil Myrtle Point game at home on Friday, so it'll be great. All right, then, we'll adjourn the city council meeting at 8:44, and I'll leave it up to the chairman of and I'll leave it up to the chairman of the Urban Renewal Board on if he wants to start or have a recess. Well, we're getting kinda late, so why don't we just go ahead with this thing? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Anybody believe who wishes, who was not involved in the urban renewal, so I won't feel bad at all. Can you point out all the meaning to order for the urban renewal agency? Uh, I'd like a motion on the consent calendar, please. It's been, it's been moved by Susan and seconded by Dennis, that we approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a request for funding. I don't think they really want it, so. Well, they're here, they're here, they're here. Do we gotta talk to Julie or you? All right. We have a request from Denny's Pizza to, uh, help them in some, uh, work they're doing on the, uh, uh, their business down there, which is in the urban renewal area. So, uh, the representative for Denny's Pizza, would you come forward, please? Give me a flip coin. Name and address, please.
Harry and Jill, Nice Water. Together, we own Denny's Pizza at ninety eight East First.
Is there? And tell us that project.
We need a roof. It's, uh, been a long time coming. It's time. First of all, I wanna thank you for the help you gave us on the exterior. It looks nice. Thank you.
Looks real good on you.
It's two things. Time is money. We finally got this roof situation. Where to put the bucket first, in the latter time, so. We've got two bids, one for twenty-one thousand three twenty, one from Traver for, uh, maybe a total of, uh, twenty-eight thousand, about. And it's for, uh, membrane type roof. All we've got's three fans to exhaust the heat out of the attic to reduce the ambient heat in that kitchen, hopefully. It's about a hundred and ten, or something like that. Basically, that's what we're asking for, is a little help for a roof.
Okay, all right. Do anyone have a question?
I do. It's just the same material that went on the roof of the Sawdust Theater.
This is the second time around, yeah. It'll be the second year. It's, uh, a TPO membrane roof system with vapor barrier, new flashes. It's not a, it's not a hot mop. It's-
Right.
Yeah.
Kevin?
On a flat roof in Oregon, membrane roof like this is the only way to go.
I agree.
That's what I've been told. I'm not a roofer, so I gotta take you guys advice.
Well, if it doesn't, you know who to talk to, Eric.
Yeah, I've dealt with several times, several different buildings, and they, the only way to go on a flat roof. Thank you.
Okay, much pleasure.
Well, we weren't the, 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 the grant, not to achieve half the cost.
Fifty percent. Right there. Cool, offset the budget.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded, and before, uh, for discussion purposes, you do the work, you bring us the bill, and then we bank. Yeah. Can't help you up front.
We can do that.
All right, appreciate that.
I'll keep your honor.
Thanks.
Oh, is it the worst ready for?
Yeah.
No, I have a worst ready for.
No, no, all those in favor, good votes, just please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, same time.
We really appreciate it.
Just sign out, and it's down low.
Is there anything else to come before the urban renewal agency?
We could add some pizza.
Yeah, we could add some pizza.
Hey, there you go. That's after the roof.
Uh, meeting adjourned.
Well, if you guys, if you have any-
That was a good one. It's a nice, uh, yeah. Well, you can, you know, go. That's another project. You know what? First takes first. Take some, uh, obviously, take some. I love that fact. Take them from the time. You can draw up, you can draw up, it's very cross street. Take the rest of the case. If you're gonna be, uh, you're just, be, be, uh, around, uh, at least learn how to draw. I do. I'll just leave it to you guys.
All right, bro.
Please, Joe, for real good.